Okay, we'll call the planning commission meeting to order. But Stanford question.
I believe. To do that way, uh, you and I study Southern America. And two three public for Richard fans, one nation under law, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We start with a little call.
Sure, Commissioner Layton, here. Commissioner Irons.
Present.
Commissioner Berisi.
Present.
Commissioner Salata.
Here.
Commissioner Connell.
Here.
Commissioner Tenai. Chair Kane is excused.
Okay, has everyone had just three minutes from last meeting? We contain a motion to accept, unless there's any revisions. A motion to approve the March twenty second.
Second.
No motion in a second to approve the minutes from March twenty second. As stated, all those in favor. We do a roll call.
Oh, sure. Commissioner Layton. Yes. Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Commissioner Salata.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Berisi.
Yes.
Are approved.
And moving on to public hearings. The public hearing on A dash T S P dash.
Oh.
No.
Go to the next letters. Skip that one. I didn't get the cut and paste quite right. Sorry.
Oh, is this the the?
The S D R. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm agreeing that. Uh, so public hearing on uh. Like design review S D R three dash two three dash zero zero three. Uh, is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff report, public testimony in the following order. Applicants, any testimony in support of the application. Any testimony opposing the application. Any neutral testimony and then applicants rebuttal. Then we will close the public testimony. After the record is closed for testimony, no other testimony will be heard from anyone unless the planning commission has a specific question. Planning commission may ask questions of staff, after which the planning commission will discuss the matter and make a decision. The planning commission may make a final decision tonight, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If matters continue, this will be the only notice of that time and date overseen. If you wish to speak, please fill out a testimony form and submit to the city reporter. I will recognize those people wishing to speak. Any questions should be addressed through me. Please state both your name and address for the record when you come to the podium as the hearing is being recorded. Please keep testimony concise and to the point. Testimony should be on the action under consideration and address the substantial criteria. The criteria that applies to decision are listed in the staff report. Testimony on other issues will be rejected and not considered by the planning commission. Failure to raise an issue in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission and the parties the ability to respond to the issue prohibits an appeal to the land use board of appeals for Luba based on that issue. Similarly, failure to raise constitutional or other issues regarding any conditions of approval in sufficient detail to allow the planning commission to respond to the issue prohibits a lawful or a lawsuit, excuse me, in circuit court on that basis. Now, I ask the members of the planning commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Please indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Hearing none. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge a planning commissioners impartiality? You're done. Funny official Colonel Lane will now present the staff reports.
Thank you, Vice Chair Berisi. Oh. It's on standby. Right. All this new gang gold equipment. Get it figured out here. So. Uh, again, thank you, Chair Vice Chair Berisi. So this is a request tonight that we're carrying to authorize the development of a manufactured home park. The applicant and owner is Wolokrock Investments. Uh, primary representative is Ronan Deep Malvey. The engineer on this project has been Dave Crumbine. It's tax lot sixty six hundred of accessories map four north twenty five east seventeen C D. The property is zoned residential with a manufactured home car um sub district overlay on it. The land around it are zoned residential um uh, to the south. On the north side of Coonsy, it's located on the north side of Coonsy Lane, east of the intersection with Paul Smith Road and just east of the Driftwood R B Park. Um, it doesn't have an address currently assigned to the property. The again, the owners requesting approval for manufactured home park. It is zoned appropriately. They are uh, there is already a manufactured home on the property as well as a shop. Those are being retained on the property. And they'll be uh, developed up to fifty five new manufactured home sites along a loop road connecting to Coonsy Lane. The approval criteria are in the staff report. Um, the procedure is found in chapter four point two. Uh, development review and site design review. This is a type, it triggers a type three requirement, which includes or requires a public hearing which we're holding tonight. So started in a, it's been a long process. We've had a number of conversations with the applicant. Um. Uh, the. And actually, the listing agent before um, the property was sold. Uh, but we worked through the completeness process. We finally deemed the application complete uh, late last year. Um, and we had a site team meeting on January tenth. At that point in time, actually, after the site team meeting, then the application was deemed complete on April seventh. The site team meeting was well attended, had a lot of questions about the project, which answered a lot of, provided a lot of answers for the developer and the developer's engineer. The uses are pretty limited when you are in the manufactured home park sub district. Um, and while you can do single family residences, uh, the applicant has pursued uh, a manufactured home park. The underlying requirements of the residential district are still applicable, and they require set backlot coverage, building height, building orientation. All those design standards are still there. Uh, the manufactured homes are not subject to the standards that a manufactured home on an individual lot would be subject to. And many of the other special standards are also not applicable except for identified. So kind of take the bulk of the residential requirements and set them aside and apply the manufactured home park standards. The manufactured home that is there, uh, we we believe it was cited in two thousand and one. Um, and the shop was built in probably the same era, about the same time. Uh, they would not be found to be non-conforming aside their use or development. Uh, they were approved. They were adequately and appropriately approved at the time that they um, back in two thousand and one. Lots of standards in, so chapter three is all of the design standards, and so they they all have something that is applicable. So chapter three point one is access and circulation. And so this is where we look at, how do we get into and out of the the park? What's required of the road? What are the connections to to the the main um, street? The connection will be to Coonsy. If you look at the last page of the staff report, there is a proposed um layout. It is a loop road that will connect to Coonsy Lane. That is going to require two access permits from the county because Coonsy Lane, while in the city limits, there is still a county road. And so they will be issuing those access permits for that. Uh, the public works director did attend the site team meeting. Um. In that conversation with the county, we did identify Coonsy Lane, and and I remember this when I was the county in the early two thousands, went through a widening process. And they acquired right away a long Coonsy. It was originally a forty foot right away in the county. The county standard is sixty feet of right away. They acquired additional ten feet. Sometimes on the south side, sometimes on the north side, but not consistently. In this particular property, it never did dedicate that additional ten feet of right away. So that is one of the requests for this action is for them to dedicate an additional ten feet of right away uh, to benefit Coonsy Lane. Um, so that dedication would be to the county um, for that public road improvement. It doesn't, uh, the action doesn't trigger um a traffic impact study. Uh, I learned something new because this is my first time. I've really worked with a manufactured home park from a permitting perspective. And what's really strange is that that there's, I'm working on two right now. This one here and another one in Stanfield. So they seem to be all the rage, I guess, would be the way to say that. Um, but the average daily trips that we assign to the standard, single family dwelling is ten, and that's been the standard forever and ever and ever. What I learned is that when you're dealing with manufactured homes in a manufactured home park, the engineers that seem to know it all have determined that those manufactured home parks only have five average daily trips assigned to them. And I'm still trying to figure that out because if you leave and come back and you leave and you come back and you leave, they don't know quite how you get back. But it's an average. So you leave today and come back tomorrow, I guess. I I'm not going to figure that out. Um, but with five A D T, it did not trigger um, a requirement for a traffic impact study. Um. Fifty five uh, new homes i- is not an insignificant number of trips. Um, but at the same time, when you look at what the peak, the A M, particularly the A M peak on Coonsy, um, it should not create, it should not create any impacts that would not be manageable within the system as it is. So the trips will go, some will go east, some will go west. Um. As other development happens and other developments come on to Coonsy, Coonsy is going to become more heavily traveled. Um, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there. Um. They will need to have access to each of the home sites within the manufactured home park. Um. They would easy to have an access permit for that driveway. Uh, it would need to be constructed of asphalt, concrete, or comparable surfacing at a minimum of ten feet in width. Uh, and we would approve those at the time that the individual development review approvals are issued for each of the homes that will be cited. Um, the current shop will also need to obtain an access permit once the internal street is constructed. Um, some of these are listed as precedent and others are listed as subsequent conditions of approval. Um, pedestrian access and circulation are also required within the development and can be achieved by placing a sidewalk along both sides of the proposed internal street. Again, built to A D A requirements. Um, we also want to begin sidewalk development along Coonsy Lane. And because we know that the River Ridge project is going to reach Coonsy Lane here in the next year or so as well. The difficulty is the county does not have a road standard that has a sidewalk associated with it. So we're going to need to figure out how to work with the county on getting a standard they can use. Uh, in reality, they should be using our standard because it is even though it's a county road, it's in the city limits, so they should be building our standards. So we still need to have that conversation with the county. We will get there. We will work with the county as we're working through um, this process as well as we've worked through um, the improvement as River Ridge makes it down to Coonsy Lane as well. We also need to figure out how to, it's really interesting because once conversations start, somehow we just, everybody decides to think about the same thing. At the same time, we've had multiple conversations with others. Um, entities in that area about how to connect um, not only this proposed development, but the um. Bella Estates. No.
Bella.
No, that uh. I think it was just not quite right. Um, how to connect Bella Vista um to um, kind of connect both of these projects, uh, Bella Vista Development and this project um, along and already in place easement, I think is going to be our best option. Connect that to the property where River Ridge is at and then work with them to make sure that we can align that with an easement to the streets, street network inside River Ridge so that kids will have, kids and adults and anybody else who would want to walk would have a way to get from these these places where a lot of people live to be able to get to a safe street, to get to Wilson, to be able to get to the grade schools. So we're working on that process. Um, very for many years that's applied for safer routes to school grants to help facilitate some of that, and we're continuing to do that work. So um, we are asking the applicant to work with us about that walking path. We don't have a specific location identified. Um. Uh, and we need to make sure that before they get too much further down their design process, we can kind of firm up where the best person, best place for that is going to happen. So um, Rolf is graciously helping with with achieving that. Uh, chapter three point two is landscaping, vegetation, street, it's released into walls. Um, in the residential district, twenty percent of your site is required to be landscaped. Um. There's really no idea on the plan that they submitted. There's no real identified focused area like a recreation area or um, anything like that. Um, you know, a a space that's being reserved for plant equipment. Uh, there's no requirement that they do that, that if they did, it would contribute to their landscaping requirement. However, the sites are large enough that even with a manufactured home and a parking pad and a carport cover, there's still plenty of available space within each um available soil, I should say, within each space to meet the twenty percent landscaping requirement. Um, but they do need to install that landscaping and maintain it. They do show along the frontage of um, Coonsy a landscaping strip, um, and that would be encouraged. And there's a requirement actually that shows up in the manufactured home park requirements. It just both the um, shield any um, rear or side yards um, from a major road with a landscaping bunker or other mechanism. So the landscaping that they're proposing along that Coonsy frontage will help meet that requirement. The application narrative does identify that side steering perimeter fence will be installed. Uh, that will require a fence permit. Um, moving on to vehicle and bicycle parking, uh, they are showing a stack parking, uh, which is very common in manufactured home parks rather than having parking next to each other like we're used to with our traditional home with a two car garage. Most manufactured home parks have stack parking. So you get home and pull in first and the spouse comes home later and and you're going to leave first. You guys got to figure that out. Somebody's got in their car to hit out. But that's how how they're designed. So each space has two stacked parking spaces. They need that requirement. Um. The code does require um, a need for bicycle parking. And that's um kind of a requirement that is identified in the code. And I think when it was placed in the code, I'm not sure there was a lot of thought given to how that actually happens in some of these situations. Uh, we would just e- encourage um, that the developer, as they work with each home that is installed, that within the carport, they put up a a hook that can function as a bicycle, you know, hang a bicycle, and that meets the standard. That's what you need to do. Um. Public facilities and standards. This is chapter three point four. So they, we're still, I think, not really clear if the street is going to be a public street or a private street. Well, we need to resolve that um, before we get too much further through the process, but that is something that can be resolved and and staff can finalize that discussion. But they do need to, with under the street, um, install the water and the wastewater. Um. And any other utility would need to be installed in the easement that would be on either side of the street to make sure we have power, gas, whatever other utilities they're proposing to install. Um. I think we determined that gas was not in the neighborhood, uh, but power is there, um, and then water and wastewater. Um. So again, the internal street is proposed by the applicant to be dedicated as a utility easement. Um. And then to the city and for the city to maintain the street once constructed. And the statement that I made here in the staff report is that for the city to maintain the street, um, the street would need to be dedicated as a public right of way and build to city standards. So those are the things that we need to resolve. And again, I we we may have enough discussion tonight to come to some resolution about if we don't, it's okay. We can, we can resolve that as part of the the public facilities, engineering, design, and approval process. Um. The proposed width of the street um, for easement or right of way is fifty six feet with improvements to include pavement. Um, two love the travel lanes, two six foot parking areas, curb and gutter, which are approximately a foot and a half on each side, and a sidewalk five feet in width on each side to for a total improvement within the forty nine feet. Also required to be dedicated or again, the utility easements. Um, streetlights and fire hydrants will need to be installed both at approximately three hundred foot intervals. I think hydrants are actually a little further. Streetlights are streetlights are pretty much always three hundred feet. Hydrants can be, I think, four hundred feet. So again, those final determinations and locations will be approved as when we just, when we approve the design that gets submitted by their engineer for our city engineer to review. Um. We talked with the United States Postal Service representative here locally. Uh, we we tentatively decided the cluster box would be installed near where the current shop is. So they've come in on a Coonsy and then the cluster box would be in that area. It it would provide a place for the uh, postal carrier to do a turnaround at that at that location. So there's no public use areas that are required as part of the development. We do strongly encourage if the developer considers improving an area of the park for recreational purposes to benefit the residents. And it would clearly be a private park. It would not have to be a public park. Um, water and wastewater lines will be installed um, city standards. Again, city engineer will review those and approve them before they're installed, and then they have to go through a a review process. We watch as they're being installed, make sure they meet city standards. Um. Water and wastewater both will come in more from Bella Vista. So they'll come in from the north. Uh, so they won't connect in at Coonsy. Um, we talked with the developer about actually looping the system in Coonsy. Uh, and again, that's something that will be finalized, size of the line, location of line, all that good stuff as we go through the design stage. So we've been talking eight inch, twelve inch. I don't think we're in agreement on what it needs to be. Uh, at this stage, we don't need to be in agreement if if with the size, but we just need to know what's going to happen. It needs to be, we need to loop it. Um, stormwater will be maintained and managed on site. The road will need to be constructed to retain stormwater either within a system of bio swales or in dry wells constructed as part of the road improvement. Again, we don't need to know exactly what they're going to do, but they need to do one of the other. Um. The only other standard that probably under chapter three point six would be entry signs. Um, so welcome to the um, Green Acres Manufactured Home Park, whatever that may be, can be installed on each, at each entrance. Um, that can be done with a nice mason or your decorative fence along the front or some other installation. Though that installation would require a sign permit before it was installed. Um. No other permits have been issued related to this development. You know, exceptions are requested or approved. And then again, the manufactured home park standards. Um, each of the spaces needs to be at least twenty five hundred square feet, and they have to be at least thirty by forty feet, and they all meet that. Um. The density is a, is just over nine units per acre. There are setbacks. So one of these to remember is that when you buy a home in a single family residential neighborhood, you have property lines. You know where that line is and that line is in the street and the line behind you. In the manufactured home park, often there's spaces, and we kind of have this sense of the space. It doesn't eliminate the requirement, though, that they, the units be so many feet apart. And so uh, they have to be, I believe it's ten feet apart unless there is a combustible fuel stored between the units. Not most new units today don't have that combustible fuel that's placed there. This is kind of old language from how a lot of manufactured home parks were built in the past. But a manufactured home could still have a complete, it can still have a propane tank installed if they so chose. So if that's the case, if there is some kind of combustible fuel, then that space between the homes has to be increased to fourteen feet. And so those would be, those distances would be applied at the time that the development review permits were issued for each of the units as they will be installed. And this is where that perimeter landscaping is required. It requires that um, or it says the city may require, and I would suggest we do, installation of fencing and planting of a ten foot wide landscape buffer between the right of way and a manufactured home park for the privacy and security of residents or aesthetics of the landscape. And this is specifically applicable to homes that are oriented with their back or side yards facing a public right of way. So there are there are three homes along the frontage. The shop is along the frontage as well, but there are three other homes that are along that frontage with Coonsy that this would be applicable to. Uh, number three, I'm at the bottom of page five. Um. These are kind of some of the things that can happen in a manufactured home park. So uh, we anticipate that there'll be um, obviously the manufactured homes, um, the park manager's office. Home occupations can actually be um, done by people who live in the park. Living in a manufactured home park does not limit your ability to have a home occupation. And accessories um structures uh, which are necessary for the operation and maintenance of the manufactured home park. Um. And and again, home occupations comply with the requirement. So these would be applicable to the operation of the park and to the residents. If anything, if any of these are take place and they require a permit, the applicant would be required to obtain that permit. Um. And this park is larger than three acres, so the standard standards under number four would not be applicable. So that's going to conclude my staff report. Um, when we get into both precedent and um, subsequent conditions of approval, um, when we get past um, the rest of the public hearing with the testimony and so on and so forth. Happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Real curious how the average daily trip is actually calculated. Okay. I'm right to that number.
You know, I don't, I I'm going to just tell you, I don't recommend going down that rabbit hole. But Dave is an engineer who's been doing this work for forty, he might fifty, fifty years. Um, he might be able to answer that question, but again, I don't know that I would recommend going down that rabbit hole. So. Yeah, five is odd because you really, how do you come back? I'd like to come back.
Yeah, go.
Okay.
Go down the rabbit hole.
Right. Yeah. Oh, Sammy wants to be on the rabbit hole. Okay.
No, not me. Leave wishing. Thank you.
And and I, when if you do have infrastructure questions, I did make Rolf come tonight, so don't hesitate to ask his infrastructure questions.
Yeah, I actually did have one question about that. Uh, which direction were you talking about tying the city services into the wastewater? Was each of them?
North.
To the north.
To the north.
So so there is an easement. So for Bella Vista, Driftwood goes to Bella Vista. Bella Vista goes along an easement and eventually connects um, on Coonsy, no, on Wilson.
Yeah.
Up on Wilson.
Eventually.
Eventually. So.
So it'll tie into the existing system in Bella Vista.
Right.
Right, right. With Bella Vista, now we can, that system, they'll go north. So, yeah.
And is that system going to be able to end the loop?
Yeah, we've done the initial evaluation of that. Um, had our city engineer work with us on that, and yes.
As I said, if I remember, it's a smaller, it's a smaller, it's two or, oh, they're eight inch. Nice, okay.
Yes, the water is coming from Bella Vista as well.
It's the same thing. Yeah, there's a system. It's it's a loop at Bella Vista, and again, it connects and goes into that same easement. Well, no, it's a different easement. But if, yeah, it's the same.
Goes out back on the Bella Vista.
Yeah.
Ties in with River Ridge.
Yeah, right behind the houses there. We just had it located.
Uh huh.
So the other properties, Bella Vista and um
Driftwood.
River Ridge, is that what it's called? Or Eagle Ridge? Have they, they know about this? I mean, have they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Actually.
Hi, Gary Austin. The water system in Bella Vista currently, isn't that metered down at the street or metered at the street?
No.
No.
Indivision reserve.
Metered times. Okay. Okay, perfect.
Now, RV park. That one of one.
Okay.
Uh, is there any additional correspondence beyond what's included in the second word?
No, we've not received anything. I guess I should say the county expressed an interest, but has not made any comments. So, and their interest was in reviewing the staff report, and they have not made any comments. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Uh, the applicant may not present any testimony. It may have.
Excuse me, I work with a commission to have me again, not kind of. Body sport. The, the engineer for the applicant. Ask you a question about traffic, there's an international traffic. Group that does research on. This stuff all across the United States and the world, actually. And then that's where I went to and I got the number. From a sheet they played out for manufactured home parks and showed that carly. And that's what five point one comes from. And I'm, and, and, and yes, it has just the. Average, you know, you had two hundred homes and they counted number trips in and out and divided. And then that's how they get the five point one. So five point one, so you can start to come back on your last trip. That's kind of the way. You know, you may not get all the active parts on that. I don't know. Uh, anyway, yeah, uh, we thank the staff to the staff who made you work with. We. Worked through it all pretty much. I think there's, there's some questions that I think Carlos pointed out we need to work out. Um, the biggest question I have personally is, is the dedication of the street. I, I've always said we're gonna. The city is gonna maintain it and, and if it needs to be dedicated. Do we need a dedicated flat or do we do with a deed of dedication? And that's a question your staff is gonna have to come up with. Yeah, we, 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 the descriptions all, 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 all worked out for that. So. It was by, by, by deed, we didn't just tap it in, the description in there and we're done. But, um, yeah, we planned it to dedicate the city so the city maintains the water and the sewer and street. Because we're built in city standards and then go on from there. So. And, and, and then as far as the size concerned, each unit will, will. We'll, we'll do a separate application. We may set it back or forward a little bit differently. Uh, depending on the size of the unit we put in there for sure. Um, we have about one set of size we're gonna put in, but if we go out, we're gonna do something like twenty five fifties or something. That, that, that has to be big. It's gotta be something like that. As far as the landscaping along Kuncy, that, that, that's been a bad one to get though. Uh, and then that's it. You know, just the shield will, 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 will wave. The other, uh. Thing is, we do need to sit down with the county with the, up with the city and you guys need to. The city and county need to tell us what kind of agreement we need to sign with them to get everybody on board. Because we want to make sure we, we're, we have more people happy. Remember, we're gonna get everybody happy and we're trying. So other than that, um. There are some. Some things like what Carlos pointed out that we need to work out, but. I think we're pretty much at, uh, uh, we, we got an agreement actually with Bella Vista. We've actually worked with Bella Vista. And it, it, it worked out in agreement to tie in that both the water and the sewer do their own property. We tried to go through it from the start with that and we found out with the manager and the ownership of that. So we. Went to Bella Vista. So we're gonna come along the south line of Bella Vista, do a sewer line. And then we'll get started operating and, um. Come diagonally to the street with sewer. That's where the sewer. The water, of course, is just try to draw some property and so you can die in that couple places.
Is there a proposed right of way for that access?
Yeah, it, 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 it's shown on the site.
Uh, oh, okay.
Can, uh, can you bring that, that's on up on the screen, Carlos?
No, I don't have that. Yeah. It's the next technology thing we're gonna work on. It's probably gonna be bad. So.
We, we got it right here. That's.
And so we, we, there. Uh, would, would be proposed an easement for sidewalk out in the northeast side there. I don't know if this made it back down, but the guy in the river. Uh, the adjacent properties to the east. Those without here walkway there somewhere. And then of course along Kuncy, as, as we've talked about, we'll have to work out with the county what they want now or they want. The monitors to do at some point in the future when the sun is not into. Which would probably make some plans trying to build something and then. And then try and cut, cut, cut that in later if they. If they regrade the street at some point. Uh, but we do plan to loop the eight inch, uh, water and go over to that in Kuncy. We plan to loop the ends of those. We have a water loop there.
Over to River Ridge.
No, no, we're, but just loop between our two eight inch pipes. We're now with twelve inch pipe.
Yeah.
Assuming that that's probably big enough to satisfy most future requirements down Kuncy. I mean, at this point, you know. Uh, the first job I did now, done here was in nineteen sixty eight. So I've been around here a while. It's hard to predict what's gonna happen, you know, you just never know. So maybe nothing happens besides the River Ridge property and. So the job is just to go with that, but you never know. So there are niche county questions I can answer now.
I need to have a question for you guys.
Sure.
Um, so the manufactured homes you're gonna bring in, are they gonna be brand new manufactured homes or are they gonna be?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So it's not gonna be just bringing your trailer, rent the spot, drop it and call it a day?
No.
Okay.
So I had the same question sort of. So they'll, it'll be fully stocked with, with homes. Correct?
At some point.
And then, then they're for sale? Or for rent?
Or. For rent.
For rent? Okay. So there, there won't be any owners?
No.
Okay.
But you're gonna put the structures on and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we need to, uh, uh, a lot of, uh, big, it's a best way.
But so, so it will function as a park.
Yes.
Um, the homes in a park can be owner occupied or they can be rented or leased units. So, um.
So you will have owners and renters.
They, they could. Um, we've not seen a clear set of park kind of rules yet from them. Um, I would encourage them to establish those rules before they start operation. So that they, they have us, uh, so they know how they're gonna operate from that perspective and think to buy us what's a copy of those rules.
Right.
Um, but parks can function in either of those ways or in some hybrid of that. So, um.
But all spaces will be filled. When the project's done, regardless of whether there's tenants or, or owners, they'll have spaces, which means they'll be maintained. Because if it takes a year to fill everything up. Each space that's not. Uh, have, uh, doesn't have people living in it will still be maintained.
Yes.
Cause we know how fast it can go fast without, you know, attention, how fast everything can go.
Yes.
To sand.
Basically, we have a base. So we have money, we might be.
Okay, great.
Okay. Um, and then other question I had, I think that's the building question more or less, but. What's actually considered the unit? Is that the structure itself or is that with the carport? Or the ten feet difference and stuff like that?
Right. No, the carport is part of that space separation. So the unit and the carport is the unit. That we look at relative to you have to be ten feet from the neighboring unit.
So from the edge of the carport is every ten feet to the next house.
Right. So either the edge of the carport or the edge of the house, whatever it may be. So some, some parks do the, they, they. They, they flip them. So you've got carport to carport and, and sidewall to sidewall and, or that's how most parks do that, but they don't, they could just do. You know, house carport, house carport, but ten feet between structures.
Okay, that's, I just want a clarification on that.
Yes. These spaces are deep enough, uh, we may stack every man in the house if our current. As we're saying, so, so we're sorry, we're, we always know one for sure.
Yeah, they are really pretty deep lots. Um, it's an, it's an oddly. It's not an oddly shaped piece of property, but it's oddly shaped when you look at trying to fit something in here that works with the. The zoning. And so when you do the loop road, it's the most efficient to do a seasonal loop road, but you leave yourself with pretty deep lots when you do that.
It was Mr. Crumby? Come on.
Dave Crumby, yeah.
Uh, was there anything else?
No, that's the question I wanted to make. I'll make sure you answered. Got all your questions, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you.
So anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? I was. Uh, yeah, would you?
She only had one side.
Would you mind stepping to the microphone and stating your name for the record?
Here's Alberto. I'm just here to, uh, my parents live in that area. I'm not sure what's going on already, but. Just wanna see what's gonna, what's gonna happen with, with, uh, the property. We're gonna talk to about that.
Where do they live?
Uh, they have a space fifty five in the east room.
So I don't know exactly where space fifty five is. What I can say is that. The notice list for this was really long because it was attached or adjacent to Bella Vista. So we probably sent seventy, seventy, I think, notices when we did this. Um, so this old, the, the, the bare property where the manufactured home is in the shop, this is the property that this is happening on. And so there'll be fifty five additional manufactured homes that'll be placed on that property. Okay, you're welcome.
And they're more, yeah, it's more behind the, the RV park. Where the shop and the mobile home is now. It'll be more to that, to that.
Yeah, it'll all happen between that current manufactured home and the shop. It's a whole area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all fenced in right now. So.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that. I don't know. Were you able to answer your question tonight?
You understand where the footpath is going?
Yeah.
Okay. So it shouldn't, there should be minimal to no impact on your, on your property or your, your area inside Bella Vista at all. I can't imagine. That's your question?
Yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Was there anyone else wish to speak in favor of the applications? Anyone wish to speak against the application? Does anyone have any neutral testimony? And. Any rebuttal from the applicants? With a solid head shake, we have engaged to wear. I hope this one unfortunately, this hearing is not closed. See, does that need to respond to questions she raised by testimonying? Do you have the issues? With this one given?
No, um.
I, I, I would just add that question raised, um. Uh, I did field a couple of phone calls, um, from folks who live at Bella Vista. They weren't, they weren't calling in opposition or in support. They were just like, what, you know, it was just like this question tonight.
Informational.
Informational. Hey, I got this notice in the mail. What's happening? Answer the question. And so, yeah, there's two or three of those phone calls, just so that you're aware. Yeah.
Uh, any questions for the staff by the planning commission?
Yes, to a point. Uh. So with this. The manufactured homes, so. You were saying that they can be basically a mixture of people bring their trailers, they put trailers down, stuff like that. Is there a way we can put a age limit on that?
Legally, no.
Okay.
No, didn't they say, didn't they say they were gonna stop ballpark?
They did.
That, that has been the conversation. So it, it, it's my, it's my understanding their intent is to, is to. Site homes in there for, for rental and lease. So, um, that, that's what we, that's kind of the model that they presented.
The case they'd all be new.
If that's the case, it'll all be new. I, I will say that we've also talked a lot about the units that are at the River Lodge. The, the cabin units that they added down there at River Lodge. Um, I think that's where they get the twenty by fifty because that's about the size of those, of those cabin units. So, um. That's part, been part of the conversation as well. So.
Okay. But, but it would still be built new. Or whatever on the law is not gonna be nineteen sixties trailer coming in.
Right. No, that's not been what we've been talking about. But, but just to be clear, under the law.
I can't say, or we can't say.
Right, right. Manufactured home parks. So, so in nineteen seventy six, the, the HUD changed the standards for what. What we now call a manufactured home was defined in nineteen seventy six. Anything built prior to that June fifteenth date nineteen seventy six. Is, um, defined as a mobile home. And the only place you can cite a mobile home today is in a manufactured home park. So just to be clear, from a legal perspective. Manufactured home parks, you can cite those things in a manufactured home park. We can't say you can't. Now, the applicant has presented that he, he's gonna be doing new homes. That's what he's presented and. And I, you know, I, I hope, I hope we can hold him accountable to that, but legally. We can't require that.
Yeah, there wouldn't be fifty, say fifty lots, but there won't be fifty, uh, mobile or manufactured homes coming in one after the other. It, it'd work like a, a regular, um, housing development. As you sell the home, they start building or you build a few ahead of it, but you start selling them and, and as it fills up, it fills up, correct?
I, I would anticipate that. Yes. Yeah.
So, so they basically just changed the word manufactured home. And mobile home. After seventy six, correct?
Though there's a real clear definition about how the home is constructed after nineteen seventy six.
Yeah, I know they changed. How they're built for sure.
If, if you remember the term good sense. That's when that came into vernacular was that era when they said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna require that manufactured homes, they start calling them manufactured homes. And they said, we're gonna require them that they have, i- it's not the exact same construction standards of the house, but it's more similar to a house than what. Met mobile homes were previous to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, any discussion by the commission? My question's gonna answer. Okay, uh, so. Uh, okay, so. We want to entertain a motion in regards to the second time to be SDR three dash three three or seven zero three. Yeah, we need to pull the record open for any reason.
Uh, so I'd like, I'd make a motion. It's gonna kind of be fumbled here to say no, but make a motion to, uh, approve. And move forward with the SDR three dash twenty three dash zero three. Site design review for World of Work Investment LLC occupant and owner. Um, as presented and as described by the occupants tonight. Uh, yes.
We'll make sure that we throw in the all pristine conditions of approval. With all pursuing conditions of approval.
Um, if you're gonna call precedent, plus subsequent as well.
Oh, yes, sorry. And subsequent. Okay, uh, any discussion on the load? Actually, we have a motion. No.
We have a motion.
Motion we can discuss. Second, we gotta vote, right?
We have a second.
Remember, Ron's just ordered. Yeah, you gotta get a second and then you can join. Okay, so.
Yeah, you can discuss.
In a second, we have to vote on this. So. Any more discussion? Call for discussion. Discussion and vote. Then go. Any discussion on the motion as given? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, can we have a, a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Lighten, yes. Commissioner Irons.
Yes.
Commissioner Solata.
Yes.
Commissioner Connell.
Yes.
Commissioner Burris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate it.
Now the real work starts. It'll be a couple of days before I get a, a notice of decision out, but I will, um, based on the action tonight. Um, and once that comes out, then, um, David would agree, um, just reach out, we'll set up a meeting with the county's public works director, we'll talk about the road standards.
If you just found, start meeting right now. So we get going on it.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
Cause a month from now, I'm not gonna be in the country.
Well, I'm not gonna be, last half of May, I'm not around. So we'll get something, a little, get it a little bit done shortly. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree, I guess. I wish it.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion items? Uh, any discussion items?
So last month, or actually, it was two months ago, uh, I guess my apologies for my short um departure. Um, I had a text message from my family. My my father had been taken to the hospital and anyway, all is okay. But it was just like, oh, my gosh, I just needed a response. So thank you for any of the meetings so quickly last time we were here. Uh, we were gonna talk about, I was thinking it was the the downtown development, but it actually says Boardman Development Code. Um. If you guys wanna jump in some discussion around that, we certainly can. We've been here almost an hour. Uh, we can certainly call it an evening and head home too, whatever, whatever you all would like.
I only had, the only question I had, and we, I should have asked this earlier, but. These, will these be uh combined, like single wide to end of wide?
Yeah, yeah, well, I think there, yeah, I know probably be some kind of mix. And again, I really like the style of the. Um.
Cabin's down.
The cabins that are down at the lodge.
Sure.
So.
And those that most, those measurements would equal to single wide, basically.
They're kind of a. Single wide that have, they're not quite a double wide, but.
Twenty feet wide.
Yeah, big single wide, like sixteen, yeah, fourteen or sixteen.
Yeah.
Put the cabins down.
Yeah, they run about a thousand square feet, maybe a little less.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would, we really, when you look at what we need from a housing perspective in more than, we need a little bit of everything. And um we've had some interesting conversations with some developers lately, and I I think we're gonna start seeing. You you know, back in May or or January, February, we approved the ten, ten units, the four flex and the two, three flexes. They're starting construction here shortly. Um, I mean, I just think we're seeing more and more happening and we're gonna start meeting some of those housing demands that we've seen. Um, there's been a couple of folks that have made comment at city council meetings about the need for housing and the fact that the housing that is here, the rents have gone just. You know.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Through the roof. But as you bring more supply in, hopefully, we can see that that demand um. Bringing that price point, normalizing it a little bit. It's not gonna bring it back to where it was, but maybe we can normalize that a little bit, so. Um, I I'm just kind of encouraged. There's a lot of interesting things happening and.
Good.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm I'm hopeful that the developers come through with what they're promising.
It's very good to hear. It's been here for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are you pushing for the twelve inches still or longer edge?
It's a water line, so, and um. I think they want, they want the city to pay to upsize it. We're not gonna pay to upsize it, so I think it's gonna be an eight inch. But again, those discussions are ongoing, so um those are really the engineered design components that. Um, you know, once they have their approval in hand, we kind of get down and get to the nuts and bolts of where's it gonna go, how's it gonna be built? Or, you know, all of those parts and pieces that happen.
Well, with as fast as one room is growing though, are we thinking ten years down the road? Are we gonna have to upgrade it again if we don't go with the bigger size now before we have all the infrastructure in?
Right, and and the the twelve is not um unrealistic and yet. Uh, we're not at the point where we're talking about looping on Cooney yet. We know we need to have better loops on Wilson, but we're not there to having that conversation about Cooney yet. So um. And I think that's gonna be an interesting internal conversation about at what point do we start investing? Uh, because in the developers can't accomplish everything. We're gonna have to figure out how to connect A to B and B to D and, you know, so on and so forth. And so where do we really need to be expanding? Where do we really need to see the loop happen? And if this isn't the most important place to put the loop, eight might be enough to just loop the park. So again, those are, you know, we we lean heavily on our city engineer to help us figure that out. I mean, it's it's the, it's the, well, what do we think from a planning perspective is gonna happen? And then how do we balance that against what we need from an engineering perspective to make it happen? Okay, yep. Those are those fun Thursday morning conversations.
Well, and your engineer can't even tell you at this point, is twelve enough?
Right, right.
In ten years, it all depends on your development.
I know.
Yeah, eighteen inch from Main Street. Um, so.
Right. No, I get that, just just knowing the growth that we've had in the last ten years to to how fast it's grown now and what it could be. You know, if if we can do the work now and save us a little bit of trouble later, that's the other part I'm thinking of.
Well, and then that also begs the question, is that will the line, you know, is it gonna be in the right place? Is that what, I mean, it would kind of drive what we achieve to put the water line in the future and would we connect into it at the time? I mean, it, there's just a lot of questions that come around. How do we get it installed the first time if we're even gonna think about connecting it to something in the future?
Yeah, and if you knew that from Paul Smith to Maine was all development. It'd be easier to decide where that would come in.
Absolutely.
But as it is now, we're coming into this, the part that there's only so much development land there until you take out the farm.
Right.
That's there, because we'll be bordering almost that anyway. Or we're part of River Ridge Will and part of this park will. So you've you've, you've got the. The parks that are already existing and one one inch field over there, but you have to come in there to begin with.
Yeah.
And you'll only, you'll only have so much stuff there property wise to put stuff. So I don't, I think. Until you know you've got the rest of that area for development, I don't, I don't think that we would. Cause you'd you'd tie in another one further down.
That's just it, cause, cause when we, the other thing we, the the constraint we have. And this is kind of an interesting conversation. So the constraint we have is that we do have the um. The farmland that's inside the city limits. And. That that owner may now um be somewhat willing to move. Um, off of some of that property to see it develop. But until that happens in a more wholesale way. When we, and 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 now we're, we we thought we were gonna see the bond property move and now I'm, that kind of has stalled and I don't know what's happening there. And when you, when you see all that land inside the city not developing, it puts development pressure on the fringes of your community. And so we have area and urban growth boundary on the east side and on the west side of town and to the south. And that's where the question then comes, well, if we're not gonna develop, if we're not gonna see movement happen on what's inside town. And we have to figure out how to put services to the fringes of town. Where do you make that investment? Because you can't afford to invest on both sides. So where do you put that investment? And and when the city makes that decision, they're really driving development. They're driving, you know, the city then is in the driver's seat rather than the landlords. I I wouldn't have the landlords in the driver's seat if we could figure that out, um, but. Somehow we have to figure out how to get center of town to develop too. It's, you know. It's what keeps me up at night. So, yeah. I don't, do all of you guys know Rolf either?
Yep.
I'm I'm thinking you all do, but um, you know, he's been at the city just two weeks shorter than I have been.
Oh, but he's been a part of the city for so much.
I know, I know, but. But he's been like employed, so uh official capacity here. Just wanted to make sure. Any other questions about um, we could talk about the development code. Um, it's, you know, I keep finding things where it frustrates me and where, you know, it's not really working well. I'm trying to make notes. I've got a lot of things in my head. Um, at some point in time, the city needs to do a pretty comprehensive review. Of the development code, the comprehensive plan, um, the TSP, the Main Street IMP, and the laundry list of of plans that we have is long. Um, and those that need to be updated is almost as long. Um, what I will say is, um, if you haven't been to the planning page, you know, the community development planning page of the website, well, head back. Um, I've posted a couple of things there. If you go to the comprehensive plan, um. We've actually added the two historical comprehensive plans, seventy one and eighty seven. I think are the rough, the rough dates.
Ordinance?
Yes, yes. Um, they're kind of fun reads, just from the perspective of what were people thinking, you know, in in the early seventies or in the mid eighties. Um, and then, of course, the current comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand and three, if I remember right. Um, so. You know, it's been twenty years. It's probably time to look at the comprehensive plan. It's not as out of date as, you know, if you were looking at the nineteen seventy one version, obviously. But there's a few things that have happened in the last twenty years that should be accounted for. Um. The development code is about the same era. It was also adopted in about two thousand and three. And again, it's, i- in a lot of respects, the development code is not in bad shape, but there's just a lot of inconsistencies and there's a lot of things that we kind of stumble through. Um. It uh, when we get into what type of permit should be issued, there's a couple of things that fall through the cracks and we're trying to not let that happen and. And so when we, when we update the code, we're gonna need to make sure we shore that up and don't let anything fall through the cracks. Um. There, the small city, um, ODOT offers a little bit of money to cities every year. Um, so right now, we're looking at um. A couple of grant opportunities. There's a small city allocation, which is funding for projects. And then there's the transportation growth management program, which is a grant program to update your transportation planning documents. So we're making application for both our transportation system plan to update that. As well as the Main Street interchange area management plan. So we'll be completing those grants and submitting them. And hoping that will will be successful. We weren't last year. I'm hoping we will be this year. Um, to update one or both of those documents, maybe do a project that's the whole thing and and that's a lot to take on, but do the TSP and the IMP all at the same time. Um. The county is in the process of updating its natural hazards mitigation plan, and so that um update process is on the website as well, so we've added that. Um, Jackie also put it as, you just go to the main page. Um, if if you just let it scroll through. And that NHMP will show up and you can enter from there, or you can go to the planning page and look at the natural hazard plan from the planning page. Uh, that plan was last adopted by the county in two thousand and sixteen. Um, it has a city of ornament annex in it, and we are updating that city of ornament annex. Uh, so, you know, not a lot has happened in natural hazards in the last five or six years. You know, we still have dust storms and. We have volcanoes that could go and we have, you know, no real potential flooding here, but in other places in the county. So, you know, this hazard's not really exciting until it happens and then it get real exciting. So that's when the chief comes in the, in the play, so um. Trying to think what else we put up there. Probably the competent and the natural hazard mitigation plan of the two, yeah. The next thing I'm gonna work on is kind of updating the TSP page and. Um, we still need to get the Port of Moral interchange area management plan up on the website, so. Yeah, we're just trying to make those changes a little bit as as we have time. Um. Yeah.
Is, is, oh, I'm doing a traffic study? And and is that part of the Sage Center review? I saw there was some, they were talking last meeting about considering it.
So, right, right, you were here for that meeting. Okay, so the ODOT involvement for the Sage Center has to do with the fact that. Um, if you were to go look at our, the two interchange area management plans that we have, the Main Street and the Port of Moral. They both have what are called management areas where we we define this space. That if something happens in this space, it could impact interchange. And there's a legal requirement that we notice ODOT and involve them in the discussions about about that land use action. So for the Sage Center, interestingly enough, because that property is actually zone general industrial. It is in the interchange, in the management area for the Port of Moral interchange area management plan. Even though traffic more likely is gonna travel to the Main Street interchange. ODOT got called into the conversation because it's in the Port of Moral interchange area management plan management area. So we did have a conversation with ODOT about that and we did ask um. We've asked the port to implement basically travel demand. Our trip demand, so we're not asking for specific improvements to anything based on the Sage Center expansion. But we're asking them to make sure that they have mitigation measures in place, so when there's large events that could release. Um, that there would be directional, you know. Go to Columbia and then go east or west, don't go down front, that that kind of, or split the trips, you know. The trips that would come out of the new parking lot could go down front. And the trips that would come out of the big parking lot would have to go to Columbia, that kind of. In other words, manage where your trips are going rather than just letting them go willy nilly. Um, we will, we know we're gonna be working towards um converting all of the front streets to ride in, ride out. In in all of them, all four of them over time. And so when that happens, we need to have other looping mechanisms in place to move that traffic. Cause if you wanna move towards the freeway to the interchange and you're going down northeast front, you you have to do a ride only, you're not gonna get to the. So you're gonna wanna turn earlier than that to come down the, down Main Street to be able to get on the freeway. So just, just go to Woodburn and experience the interchange and.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah. I think the other thing I might share um. Is that I uh. We're still, we're still. Putting away um the the Berry stuff. Um, Rolf and I, I know I've shared previously, we spent a lot of time kind of going through what was in his office, figuring out what to do with it, what it was all about. Um, we recently brought in Diana Strong. Um, she used to work for me when I was at the county. Um, and she she no longer works for the county either and, but she knew how the planning department worked and how the filing system functioned. And so um that was kind of the last piece I needed to do and. Uh, so she's been in, she's put in about, I think we're just over forty hours now that she's put into filing kind of the last of everything. And we're, we're merging all the files, we're getting them in there by property. Um, it's starting to make sense, so um. Yeah, it's coming together. If if any of you were in Berry's office, if you were to come and visit, you wouldn't recognize it.
What's the proposed start date for the new stadium?
Uh, it's a good question. Can I answer that?
Uh, it it's all contingent upon uh successful background, so I'm, to give you an exact date, I can't do that.
Yeah, I'm sure probably only be in the next couple of months.
Gotcha. I was sure there was a tentative start date up in the background or whatever. I had a quick question to jump back to the first meeting that I attended. We were discussing the Sage Center and it's obvious they're well underway with the construction now. It, was there any more discussion in regards to the crosswalk and that that potential? Uh. I don't call it a nightmare yet until we see it, but that possibility of issues that are gonna come from that crosswalk across the street. And the in and out of traffic that could come out of the, the flow out of that parking lot and that crosswalk being right there and right there at the corner.
Right, no, we have not resolved that, but those could, those conversations will happen before they decide where that.
And so that that, bridge idea is probably, they're probably way past that.
Yeah, I I don't see them building a bridge.
Just a pedestrian.
Yeah, yeah, um, again, I'm hoping that um with what we're asking for with the travel demand. Where for a a larger event, the traffic that would be coming out of the, the current parking lot would be going north. So the sidewalk should be protected.
The crosswalk.
The, right, the crosswalk should be protected because then the traffic coming out of the new parking area should be going west on front. So if there's, if we avoid traffic doing this around the corner. Well, we, it's what's called travel demand, so we actually require when there have traffic leaving an event that they, they sign it, they have flaggers. There's a lot of different ways they can accomplish that. Right, concert lets out and you're coming out of parking lot A, your only option is to go right.
Got it.
Yeah. Now, there's people who are gonna not follow that and make a turn of that, but if if eighty five to ninety percent of the people follow the rules, then you will. Eliminate, if not eliminate, significantly reduce the conflict.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the objective.
And they're specified cross now time, cars get to go now time, and not just, just go as you please and and.
I mean, again, those are, those are the things that we would not dictate. We would tell them that they have to have a traffic demand or traffic management plan.
Right.
And they would have to implement that. It's kind of like, it's kind of like when a utility comes in and is gonna do work in town and we tell them they have to have a a safety plan that includes flaggers. They, they make the plan.
So we don't have any permanent uh. Mechanical devices that'll tell it.
There wouldn't be anything permanent.
Crosswalk, uh, go, you know what I mean? Walk, go, not, don't walk.
Certainly one of the things they could implement would be to put in um either a, you know, push a button to or an or the rapid. The rapid push. I mean, those would be things they could choose to put in. We didn't specifically require that. We said you need to manage it. Now they come back and tell us they wanna manage it. How they come back and tell us they want to manage it is up to them. We'll decide, we'll look at the plan and go, we like it, or we're gonna change it, or, you know, whatever. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion items?
I don't have any other discussion. I have, we do have on the next page of the agenda, we do have public comments set. Uh you're gonna get assigned some agendas tonight. Yeah, tonight is the uh it's just like the last available public meeting. So I expected more of you, I guess.
Wait, wait till the last minute.
Well, I guess now we, I should officially say, uh we are open here, public comment are here. Any comments from the public?
Quite a bunch.
Uh any last commission comments? Okay, uh we'll adjourn the meeting.